Call to order, City Council of March 7th, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, my work conflict, I'll talk to you later. Item two, public comments, want to come up and say anything today? Okay, item three, approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Motion in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does carry. Item four, consent agenda.
I'll move to approve, but I'd like to pull G.
I second on pulling G.
Second, on consent agenda, we're going to approve for A through F and H and I. And we'll talk about 4G later. Motion in second on the consent agenda, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion carries, 4G.
Alright. Just I know it's the East Park grant resolution, I guess the biggest questions I had. Well, again, how does it affect our budget? I know we talked a little bit, I wish Nate was here a little bit too. Where the grant, if you get it, would be only 300,000 and then the city would have matched the 300,000. And I just, Lori, maybe you can talk to this because I know we talked to about it as phase one and things along those lines of how that would affect our budget.
So, a few years ago, the city council had the East Park project in front of the state bonding committee for the phase one, which was estimated at 600,000 at that time. The city council had earmarked 300,000 out of the local option half cent sales tax fund for East Park. That money is still dedicated today and earmarked for that portion of the project, so 300,000 would still come from there. The, when Archon developed, they dedicated the East Park acreage, 92 acres, to the city, plus 50,000 in park dedication money. We still have about 23,000 in that, of that original 50,000. The other money that was spent went to planting some sapling trees and starting the prairie restoration program. And that started in 2018. So those funds are also available, the 23,000 is also available for phase one. I think the park board is further defining exactly what phase one meant, but when SEH had done a study a few years back, commissioned the study, they kind of broke it into two portions. And the phase one included doing those plantings for the trees and the prairie restoration, along with getting the canoe access in the parking area and maybe some unpaved trails, you know, maybe like woodchips or that sort of thing. So I believe that's what was in the phase one that was envisioned at 600,000.
Does that 50,000 come out of that 600?
Nope, that's an additional.
So 650, but 50 is from Archon, okay.
Correct.
And then, the other question would be obviously, how does it affect? We have set aside for that first phase, this, we talked about the improvements or whatever, the fund or the grant would get us only through phase one, so then phase two and three would be obviously focused more on what we talked about in Mendes Trails. And how do we raise that money then to move forward to phase two and three?
To be determined down the road. There is some local option sales tax money that's not been designated to a project yet. I know that we're still kind of waiting to see what happens with the community center and the capital campaign. There's roughly about 2 million that the city council has not designated in the local option sales tax, but that's also us looking at a conservative look of what we're going to collect in the sales tax money. So the council always wanted to kind of keep a buffer there in case the collections came in a little bit less than what we had envisioned, so.
And then overall scope of the project after phase two and three would be?
I looked back at the SEH study from 2018, the total project was estimated at 3 million to do everything that was envisioned from that study. You know, there might be things that we can't do or has to be in a phase three or phase four down the road. You know, it depends on where the funding would come in down the road.
Right, and this is specifically for phase one though?
Phase one is just the 600,000 or 613,000 dollar estimate is what we're looking at with this grant.
Okay, that's what I had.
Okay, Ken, do you have something?
Yeah, so of the 600, we'd be applying for a grant to the DNR for 300, and then the other 300 and 13,000 would come from us.
Correct.
Out of Fund 200.
The park dedication money is in a different fund. That 50,000, where there's 23,000 left, that comes out of Fund 205, which is the park board fund.
How much is in 205 total?
I looked at their budget, it's at 262,000 is what they have in their account today.
200 and how much?
62,000.
Okay, and then earlier today I asked about how much is in Fund 200?
Which is the local option sales tax.
Which is the local option sales tax that we benefit from, and that's at 930,000.
Correct.
So, I'm in favor of us applying for this grant. And then if in 2023, we're going to match that with 313,000, where's that money going to come from? 205 or 200 or to be determined?
We would take the 300,000 from Fund 200 and the 13,000 would come from 205.
Okay. And then, the regional sales tax fund 200, how much money on average flows into that for the city of St. Joseph?
We.
On average?
We budget very conservatively, so last year I think we budgeted 450,000. We received, it was I think like 400, or 525,000 that we received in 2021. We try to be conservative because we don't know, it could change, you know, the economy is fluctuating quite a bit today, so. Try to be conservative on those estimates.
And then if the council was successful in getting on the referendum a food and beverage tax at one half or 1% for the city of St. Joseph, would the monies from that go into one of these two funds or would it be a different account number?
I would put it in a separate fund because it would have its separate purpose.
Okay.
For it.
And what do you think that separate purpose would be?
To be determined by the council.
Okay.
And I don't know if that is drafted in the referendum question or not, but.
Okay, that's all I had.
Yeah, it goes in the question, not necessarily in the legislative request to put it on the ballot though. Everybody, anybody else, 4G, going once, going twice, okay. Can you get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve consent agenda 4G, second.
Motion in second to approve consent agenda, item 4G. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion does indeed carry. Item five, technologies updates.
Yeah, so last November at one of your city council work sessions, you discussed uses for the American Rescue Plan Act funding, also known as ARPA. And so one of the items we had suggested was technology updates that we had identified for, you know, needs of online and in-person trainings and meetings and so forth. So before you this evening are quotes from Touchpoint Logic for the multipurpose room. That would be upgraded to essentially it would bring the system the way it is in the council chambers here. So you'd be able to do webinars, Zoom meetings, Microsoft Teams and so forth. And then in conference room two, which is also known as the police department, although it's for all staff, the police department conference room, we would add video conferencing capabilities like we have in conference room one. Definitely finding the need where we're having overlap issues with meetings and trainings. The public works facility is also on here, they do not have any capabilities for the same type of trainings I've just described. And then the council chambers, we have in there to add, right now we just have where Randy is able to hook up his laptop and all the other stations for staff. If they need to bring something up on the screen, it doesn't have that capability. So before you this evening is a request to approve the Touchpoint Logic quotes as presented.
So what's the total on those?
Yep, so the total, which is in the staff report, is 24,596.82. And that would come out of, again, the ARPA funds.
And can you tell us what's in the ARPA funds right now?
We received just over 800,000 dollars total, and then I'll let, Lori, do you know where we're at with what's left over?
So the what you've approved to date was really the 95,000 for the server updates. We have another roughly 95,000 that we're thinking for the rescue van that we would apply towards there. And we talked about 40,000 for changing to cellular meter reads this year. Still, you know, forthcoming on quotes and stuff with that. We are going to look at some software updates as well in the finance department for, we haven't changed that system since, I don't know, probably 1900 something. We're finding many communities switching from the Banyan data system and we're trying to kind of keep consistent here with the area cities with systems that are there on. Many communities are leaving Banyan, so it's leaving it a little bit, not sure where their software support will go here in the future, so we're trying to stay ahead of that game. So those are the ones that I can think of, am I missing any of the projects? Just off the top of my head, those are the ones that we.
Yeah, one more, and then I see that you have the quote for the upgrade for the fire hall will be provided at a later date. Also, that would come out of the ARPA fund, I would assume, correct?
That would be the intention.
Okay. Did you already get quotes for that or is that in process?
We'll actually bring that forth yet at a future meeting.
Okay.
And why did we, do we get quotes from other companies or is this a company?
That we feel comfortable with. It is a company that we feel comfortable with, we actually have had them do our technology updates in this council chambers.
Okay.
And that's only a chunk out of the first half of the ARPA payments.
We received the first half last year and then the second half will be coming in July for a total of 803,000.
Yeah.
Well, I move to approve Touchpoint Logic LLC, quotes for updating technology as presented, second.
Second.
Doesn't matter, you tied. Motion in second to approve technology updates. I have some questions. So can, is it possible to upgrade the wireless routers in this building? Because they suck on this side of the building. And they may be poor on other sites of the building, but I just know in my office and in here, the wireless router for network is bad. And I also wonder if, I know you guys are all getting staff updates to plug into your computers, but we have nothing up here to plug into our computers if we were to so choose to. I mean, this is technology free up here except for the screen. And what would that take? Because there are times when, if I remember right, Dale had to go over to somewhere over there to put in his, plug in his thing and do it. And so, to me, if you're going to upgrade that desk, you might as well upgrade this desk. You might as well see if you can improve the wireless routing network in here because it's poor in this building. I mean, that's something I would like to see added on to and maybe come back at a later date. But if they're going to do that desk, then you should have all done at the same time. Again, that's my opinion.
Maybe does that come with the quote to the fire hall at a later date?
Very possible, I just, I would hope that if they're going to do the work over there on the desk, they would do it all at the same time. This is going to be a lot more complicated than what's already installed over there though, I'm pretty sure. Only because this is isolated.
Yeah, it makes sense that if they're going to do that work over here, they would do it part of that project.
And I don't mind if they delay until you got a firm quote on this, like move forward everything else and come back with later cost on better wireless. But I think those are also technology needs in this building alone. And I don't know about the, again, I don't know about the makeup of the office stuff as well, how connected your desks are and stuff like that.
I have no issues.
I mean, I don't know, but, okay. Yeah, Mr. Clusman.
As long as it doesn't come before paper towels in the men's room.
I actually followed up with that today.
Can we get that with ARPA funds too? Okay, motion, so all my stuff can come later, I just think, again, look at wireless router upgrades and then if you're doing the desk, we should do this as well. Motion in second approving technology updates, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Item six, Minnesota Street Traffic Study.
Good evening. In your packet's a memo from administration and Dwight and myself, we had met last month with the principal from the lab school regarding the traffic study along Minnesota Street and First Avenue intersection and in particular reviewed, if I switch my screens here. Council may recall when we talked about recommendations or an approach to improvements, we talked about a kind of a tiered approach. We had a level tier one, which were somewhat low cost, low impact type of alternatives to consider and then more costly, either geometric or signal type improvements. But we worked through that menu of tiered one, tier two improvements with the principal. And in that cover memo, you may have noticed, the principal was receptive to a couple of the tier one approaches that we recommended. And the first one being to evaluate the removal of parking spots adjacent to each side of the intersection. So if I switch to the area photograph for just a moment, First Avenue is the street at the top of the screen, Minnesota Street left and right and the lab school here to the south. You may recall we have crossings striped at both sides of the intersection. So one scenario was to remove the adjacent parking stalls to improve the visibility of pedestrians that would be in the crosswalk. Statutorily, we should see 20 feet of separation between a parking stall and a striped crosswalk. And so in this instance, we would be looking at the removal of this stall and the removal of this stall so that we ensure that we have at least 20 feet of separation between the parking spot and the crosswalk. So that was one in the, of the tier one recommendations. The second one that they were receptive to is if we were to consolidate the crossing to one side. So right now we have ped ramps and striping obviously on both sides of the intersection. You could consider obliterating the striping on one side and then encouraging crossing to be on one side of the street. Now, we're creatures of habit as you know, and so sometimes encouraging people to cross at the crosswalk can be a challenge. And there's no guarantee, if you would, that we wouldn't still see pedestrians want to cross at this, at this location. But if we remove the striping and help condition pedestrians or parents to use one side, that would be another area of trying to raise driver awareness so that it's predictable. We also believe that the line of sight is probably a little bit better on the west side of that intersection than the east side. So those were the two that the principal, at least verbally, was receptive to and wanted to encourage the city to pursue. And so I think at this stage, we wanted to bring back that staff had met with the principal, reviewed the options, and these were the first two low impact ones that the school was receptive to.
Hey Randy, how far is the one parking spot above in the?
Up here.
Yeah, even farther up on the corner, yeah, right there, how far is that, is that 20 feet?
I think it's a little bit less than 20 feet.
So would you have to remove that one as well? Per your.
State guidelines.
State statute 16934.
It looks about 10, 10 feet, so yes, that would be advisable.
Which crosswalk are you saying that would be removed, either west or the east?
The discussion was removing the east crosswalk.
You're saying that is more visibility on the east or on the west?
If we had pedestrians on the west side, it created a better line of sight in terms of pedestrians.
And when we would do that, are you going to put those lovely little yellow things then? And so to help the pedestrians understand that not to park in those parking areas that they normally felt comfortable in doing so? Do you know what I'm saying is to?
We had, or the school had the yellow placard that sat at centerline that was a description to yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk. To my knowledge, they still have it, although I think they were describing it was getting beat up a little bit. So it might be time to replace that, but.
But I mean for the parking areas, because otherwise people will still park there.
So there we would have to.
If there's nothing there, they'll still do it.
Creatures.
Exactly.
We would look to have to probably change the regulatory signing there in terms of adding a no parking sign, for example, and/or striping the curb face, yellow would be the combination we would be looking at.
Okay.
So Teresa, I think at least, you know, at this stage, we wanted to present that as the options that were, well, the whole menu of options were shared with the school, but they understood that we typically would look at this in a tiered approach as opposed to, you know, both cost and/or impacts to safety.
So you don't have any cost on this one and two?
Not at this stage, so I think we wanted to have a dialogue with the council. If the council was receptive to that approach, we can certainly assemble what, you know, the signing and striping and pavement removal costs would be, but.
Well, I think the third, if I understood this right, was also in collaboration with the school to, if they needed that physical patrol to come out also, that would be on them.
We have talked, yeah, we did remind the principal that that was one of the options that we had identified, was actually having a crossing guard. I know she mentioned bringing that up with the parents. So I'm understanding they're still receptive to that approach, but also understand that it can be an effective tool in the toolbox.
Awesome.
So, just my opinion, if we're going to move east or consolidate east to west, I'd be, I'd almost say that they have to provide a crossing guard. Because that will force their changes of habit by having somebody out there and forcing them to the right space. It doesn't necessarily change adults that may be crossing and going to whatever, but at least at start and stop of school, if we're going to move, remove that one, then we need to have some assurance that they're going to actually follow it. And I don't know how, however you guys want to present that, I just think one has to go with the other. It's not a one or the other, it's they have to go together somehow.
I would anticipate we would have both a conversation and follow up with written correspondence that this would be one of the conditions that the city would seek in order to pursue these other improvements.
Sure.
If there's consensus from the council, I think that gives staff enough direction to follow up.
Very good, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Seven, noise and special, oh sorry, noise and special events ordinance.
Yeah, so if you recall, last fall, the council had discussed the city's noise ordinance related to special events. We had received a number of complaints with some of the events that occurred last year. So it was left that I would come back, so that's why I'm bringing it back to you this evening. It's that time of year again where we're going to start having those event requests come before you. I had reached out to legal counsel in regards to our current ordinance and what we're required to do and so forth. So in your packet, it did include legal counsel's memo as well as administrative rules 7030, which we have to follow. So essentially it doesn't differentiate between if there's property that is zoned and or used for commercial, it's treated no differently, we still have to make sure that we're treating it just like we would a residential property. So just be mindful of that, so this evening it's really just to get input from you, from where you want to go because it's that time of year, we're going to get those requests. And like I said, last year we received a number of those complaints, so.
I mean, the ordinances are clear, state law is clear on what is what, you know, the, and the last time we discussed this, I asked Mr. Funenstein to look at the cost of noise meters. You know, and that was kind of where we left it. Because without evidence in court or whatever, in case someone challenges, you need that official DB reading in order to, you know, cite them.
Do we need stronger wording in the ordinances?
Well, if you reviewed Sue DG's staff report, you notice she talks about, we don't have a decibel. Yes, we reference back to state, so there's decibel reader, you know, information in there. However, we don't have it in our ordinance, so yes, her suggestion would be to add that. So it's not subjective.
So we need, how I'm understanding it, and that's why I asked, is that, yes, we have the state, but it's better to have a little bit more of a clear sense for us as a city to have that instead of having to go fall back on.
Well, certainly not to be subjective in your ordinance at minimum. You can certainly reference back to the state standards, that would be perfectly fine to do that. But yeah, I would definitely, you would remove the subjective.
If our attorney is also suggesting it, I think that's a good indication that we should do that also.
So, I have a question, looking at our ordinances, you know, I had Teresa, I said, hey, can we get the ordinances to look at it? And our chapter 10, whatever nuances and offenses here, there is some subjective wording in there in my eyes. If you look at, on the second page in section, you know, 1002.02 under C, it says individuals not required to welcome unwanted noise into their own homes and there simply is no right to force unwanted noise into the home of an unwilling listener. And there is a compelling interest in prohibiting such noise on a content or neutral basis. And then in E, it says it is the intent of the city council to prevent excessive noise without unreasonable infringement upon the right of the city's inhabitants and visitors. So in my eyes, I could say, well, my kids go to bed at 8:30 and your event goes till 10, and that's unwanted noise that I want in my house. My kids go to bed, that's unwanted, so I could come back because that's what your ordinance says. That's what our ordinance says. And then in E, it's the job of us as the council to prevent that. It just kind of seems subjective, like he said, she said type of thing. So in looking at that, I agree that you either have to have a decibel or you got to change some of this ordinance because it's going to come back and bite us in the butt. And I know, I have the, you know, and then in looking at the other ordinance, which is our ordinance, you know, 701 licensing and regulations of consumption of intoxicating liquor, most of our events happen with liquor, right? And the biggest complaints we had were from Law Jam this past year. I get it, I don't want to stifle our events in town, it's what makes us unique. But then at the same time, you know, how long did Law Jam go till? It went till midnight. And in this ordinance here, it says that, I've got to find it if it's on page 70119, that they can have an outside activity that is conducted with liquor sales. Each establishment can have one night during a calendar year, extend past 9:30 up until midnight. How many places sell alcohol in our city that can have one event past midnight? And I'm sure you're aware of this, you've got five bars here. So the law could do it, Sal's could do it, Midi could do it, the Legion could do it, Bad Habit could do it, Crew could probably do it. You're setting yourself up to have, again, a lot of events. And Chief, I'm sure you, you know, if they do that and they, we approve these ordinances, you can't do anything if I come calling at you and say, hey, they're playing music till 11:00 PM here. Well, they each get one. And you can't do anything, but I'm going to get 50 calls from you, which is what happened at Law Jam. Now, again, I'm not saying you want to stifle our events in town, but one event brings up a pretty big question of all the other events that are setting a precedent, which is making your job harder for your officers and sergeants, you know, and. You know, and again, you don't wanna get rid of it, but what's the happy medium? Do you allow them to have that one event, but then in that same right, in that it says we have the right as counselors to limit to the following, require measures to limit the regulation of noise and or time. Personally, I don't think you should have it unless obviously Joe Town, which could maybe become a community festival, but maybe we shouldn't have the loud of music go past a certain time, which in my eyes would be your nine thirty or your ten. And that's just kinda my thoughts in your ordinance is because if you have people that are coming back and they're reading these, you know, and we're approving them, and we don't know what we're approving, you could have five or six or seven of these events happen. And you guys have nothing you can do if you have fifty complaints. Right, so again, I know we're a unique city and we have a lot of events. I don't wanna take that away from us, but one event brought a lot of concern from our citizens as to what we're gonna do about it as a council.
The point being, our ordinances can't be weaker than a state law. And now it's, you know, so I mean, if the ordinance is weaker than a state law, Chief Funenstein will enforce the state law, correct? I mean, so that's where you come in with a meter or whatever they call.
A decibel meter, right?
Yeah, that's where you can enforce the state law to say, this is, this isn't acceptable, if you got Joe Blow calling in at eight thirty and the noise is more so than what's allowed.
Well, I still think we need to change our ordinance, at least C and E, because that's so subjective, in my eyes.
And I, and I think that us as a city, we are growing, um, and we are, as we have noticed in many other different committees, that we're changing our ordinances and our laws, and because it's changing and this is only another subject that we see that is, and I would agree to, um, look at and follow our attorney's advice and reword this.
Well, and then I think us as a council, you'd be pretty specific as to what those one events that those bars and or places that want to serve alcohol want to do.
Well, they have to come before us before they can do that.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying is when they-
That's all special, that's all special permit.
Right, I know, and when they do come to us, you just-
They can have it, but if they don't adhere to what we require of them, then they, you know, lose their privilege.
Right, and what I'm saying is, us as a council might wanna stifle some of that music past ten. Or those loud noises. And those are just thoughts, and then again, I know we have our big festival here, but Joe Town Rocks, why can't that be changed to a community festival? I know, just thoughts.
I don't think we want our police force to walk around town with decibel meters. They got more important things to do. I just think we have, this is a good discussion, we just have to have common sense. When we approve a permit for so and so to run this event or this entity to run that event, we have an expectation with that entity that this is what we expect of you. And if we get a bunch of complaints, then the next year it rolls around, we don't approve it.
Or there's more restrictions.
Consequences.
More, more stringent restrictions. Cause again, you also don't want our police officers walking around not being able to do anything because we said they can play music till midnight.
Then the public goes, well, why aren't you doing something?
Yeah.
Why aren't you doing, you know?
They have enough fish to fry with people drunk in the streets and all this other stuff, then to go around with a decibel meter. I mean, get the health department to do that. We don't, we don't have a health department.
No, we don't.
I think, I think it's what you said Kevin.
Contract with the city of Saint Cloud.
So you're saying these people are calling and complaining, their complaints aren't, uh, beating up people?
Saying that.
Well, that's what you just said.
No, no, you just said you don't want the police officers walking around with a decibel, I agree with that, but to your point, we need to be more understanding of what's coming forward to us as a council and what those restrictions need to be.
Logjam was an issue.
Yep.
And that has to be addressed before we approve the next permit.
Without that tool in the toolbox. I mean, that comes right down to-
Just common sense.
Dwight, how do you feel about this?
I'm not even aware, honestly, that there's a state law regulating noise to a city. Most of the noise ones that you deal with are with motor vehicles, boating and everything else, it's no different. This has been brought up before, public urination, unreasonable acceleration, open containers, these are not state laws. These are city ordinances passed by a city. So there's no statewide noise as far as three people sitting around a bonfire having a conversation is not legal in Minneapolis versus Saint Joe versus Detroit Lakes, the city has to, you know, basically pass their own. So as of right now, our ordinance basically reads, it can be heard off the property, you're in violation, violation. Um, it's a very common myth that most people think it's quiet time after ten PM at night. It's not, it can be had, you can have a noise violation at noon if it, you know, is unreasonable. So, you know, as of right now, I agree with Kevin that, um, we're trying to use common sense, we're trying to use a reasonable level. But it's not as easy, and what Bob is saying as well is correct, I mean, it's not like if somebody's going thirty-one in a thirty, they're speeding. There's a set number and we can enforce it, right now, it's arbitrary, so I mean, that's kinda you guys to, to let us know if you wanna hit a certain level or if we're gonna kind of use the common sense method or a variation between there, I'm.
What do you feel more, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
What do you feel more comfortable with?
You know, up till now, it's worked, I mean, we've just, you know, kinda worked on it, I mean, there has been the issue with the Law Jam where it's gotten very loud. I know that, um, Joe Town Rocks is working with the community to try to mitigate some of the complaints and stuff as well. Um, you know, it's, it's just one of those things in life, every so often you have one that, that definitely angers somebody and then we deal with it, but, uh, I don't know, it seems like if you overcomplicate it too, I mean, I, I was part of the whole study when we were trying to deal with Borghert and the noise all the way up to Pleasant Acres, and I was, I had the five thousand dollar uh, meter that the county attorney's office provided, we would sit out in Pleasant Acres trying to get the right decibel to hit a certain threshold. And even though we could audibly hear it in Pleasant Acres, it didn't rise to a level that was too loud to meet a certain noise criteria, so. I don't know.
Borghert?
It was at one time that Borghert-
It wakes me up every morning, starting May first, at five AM. You just get used to it, it's like a bird chirping outside your window, so. Let's not, let's not compare Borghert to Law Jam.
My, my big question though is, you were, you also, you know, you don't wanna hurt your businesses, I get it, but let's just talk about that specific, specific event, because clearly that's what's bringing up a lot of the things is when you and your men were out there and you got all these complaints, what did you guys do?
Yeah, it was difficult because they did have a permit to go to a certain, certain timeframe, and you know, we could just basically tell them that they're still operating with a permit, and we don't have a certain threshold, once they have a permit, that we just kinda went with it. Cause we get complaints on Joe Town Rocks as well, and we get complaints on the fireworks during the Fourth of July for noise as well, and as long as it's permitted, we deflect back to the permit.
So I think it goes back to us as a council to be more diligent and diligent on permits and how they're going to react.
Well, and I think the biggest thing we need to understand, so sorry, Rick, but, um, is it's not always gonna be us, okay? There's always terms and always, and I think that's what we need to keep in mind, and of course, we need to think about the people that are actually dealing with it face to face. And so, that's what I'm looking at, is talking with the people that are actually dealing with it and having the calls, and then also we are looking at the council, cause we might not be here, and so to be able to have that, um, ability for the ones that are in face with it, cause we're not here, I think it would be advantageous of us to be able to collaborate and hear what Dwight's saying too.
Kelly, I think that goes back to that, you got, you got your ordinance. None of us are on here, I know what the ordinance reads, if it's pretty subjective, I've got something to say. He said, she said, this is what your ordinance says. You know, I'm not required to welcome unwanted noise into my home, this is unwanted noise, it's what your ordinance says, follow your ordinance. So I'm saying the bigger problem, like you're saying, if we're not all here, you need to look at your ordinance.
Is that enough input for you? Did everybody get to, Rick didn't get to say anything yet.
I'm just gonna say, you know, let's not throw all the, all the apples, all the baby, oh, with the water. I mean, we've had one bad event, we have circles of a bad events, we have circles of bad student gatherings. And I don't, I mean, you can drag that down to whatever level you want, it still has to be enforced by somebody. And so, again, a, a, common sense makes more sense than, I know when Ann, Sean come in for La Jam, they're gonna be more than apologetic. And they're gonna bend over backwards or we're gonna hold them to a different standard. But by and large, this isn't a huge topic, we have ups and downs. And I don't wanna overburden staff with trying to come up with a sense of laws that are damned near unenforceable.
You don't think that's subjective, though?
I think it probably needs to be looked at, but I, throw it out then, I mean, I-
That's what I'm saying, that's, I'm not saying about the events, I'm saying looking at ordinances.
And I, and I would bet, if you looked at most of our ordinances, there's some subjectivity in all of them.
But we still need to tweak, we still need to change it, you know?
And if the council wants it to change, then give the staff direction to change, I'm not sure it needs to change, but you've identified a few things. I'm just saying, let's not judge all the events based on one incident at Law Jam.
Correct. And I don't think I'm saying that, I just more looked at your ordinances, where if you're gonna go into court or something along that lines, I've got this to back you, cause this is what the city says.
You gotta have the ability up by the ordinance to shut down a loud gathering, loud party, whatever it may be.
And we have that number.
Whether it's in the business district or the residential district or R two, R three. You need something in writing to shut down the noise. I mean, I've talked to Dwight on some new, some noise parties, face to face, and there's nothing you can do. But hope like hell that they don't get out of hand where they get physical and rowdy and protest and burn and everything else, that could happen.
But that's-
Not that it will, but you gotta have something safe.
But wouldn't that help Dwight if it, the wording was a little bit stronger, so that you wouldn't have to sit there and hold a thing in the air to look for a flipping number? Do you know what I'm saying?
So, before you answer that, subdivision nine, even though it's subjective, gives the police enough authority to disperse crowds in lo- in large gatherings that are making noise. So we have it, it's subjective, it says, to disturb the peace, quiet repose of another person, police officer receives complaint determines it's creating such a noise disturbance he may, at present, owners premises, uh, disturbance occurring, disperse immediately. So we have the power to do it. Now, will they sue us and say, well, it wasn't that loud? Maybe, but I don't think you're gonna see that. So in our subdivisions, we do have that kind of authority.
And I'm just saying it's vague, I think we should just make it a little bit stronger, just in case somebody, because we are in a day and of age that people like to say, I'm gonna sue ya.
Okay, then.
Why don't we all take this home and, uh?
I, as vague as it is, it's, it's common sense, cause we-
Yeah, delete.
Well, again, we will start receiving complaints and they'll investigate and they have the authority to disperse a gathering.
I'm just saying, get rid of your C and E.
You can get rid of C and E anyway, as long as you don't get rid of subdivision nine.
I didn't say anything about subdivision nine.
I'm just saying, they do have the authority to, to act on noise.
Yes, I, I don't think they should just act on a complaint though.
Yeah, I-
Correct.
My suggestion would, they act, my-
But, I mean, use your ears and common sense to say, hey, this is loud.
Yeah.
Well, my input would say to let, uh, Teresa, uh, sit down with whoever would be need to be able to clean up the wording, whether it's Dwight or our attorney or whoever it was, so that it would make it a little bit more comfortable for us so that we have a stronger position with it, would be my suggestion.
And I would say as a council, let's not grant any permit unless we have clear expectations for the person applying for it, or the entity applying for it. Good enough? Item eight.
And we can do that at permit.
City picnic table?
I mean, we can.
We can.
Yeah, so, um, probably a cou- it's going on a couple of years now, right, the CARES funding that we received?
Yep.
Time flies, um, one of the things that you use that CARES funding for was to purchase, um, picnic tables to, to allow businesses to put it out there outside in the, in the sidewalk. Um, you know, you saw those along Minnesota Street, um, even College Avenue, um, and then even elsewhere to, um, help when they were, were shut down, essentially were forced to shut down because of COVID, so we still have those picnic tables, of course, we wanna see if you want to, um, put those out for businesses, um, for the season.
I would say by request.
That's what I was gonna say, I, I think they clutter up our, our walkways, especially downtown.
My opinion too.
I think it's one of the most well-received things we've ever done, people talk about how good it is to go get a ice cream cone, sit outside on a picnic table, to go get a sandwich, sit outside on a picnic table.
Put them out on the other side of the street.
Maybe just-
That I don't, that I, I actually-
That's what I, I mean, I, I'd be okay with that, but I think on the other side, on the side that they were on, it's clutter.
Yep, I agree.
Maybe, but I know that local blend likes it, I know they really do.
Yeah.
But I don't have a problem with the other side as well, I just think it's businesses, if they want, what, didn't we use some kind of- Didn't we use some kind of request or something?
We actually did, yeah, we actually did an email blast out to those businesses and asked them if they wanted us to-
Have you gotten any?
We didn't do it this year, so, um, we did that in the last couple of years, so that's how we did that. Um, it was well received, and most of them did, you know, have it in front of their business. So when you say the other side, I'm assuming you mean south side of, um, of Minnesota Street.
Yeah, let Ryan kinda space them the way, uh-
Yeah.
And again, I would bet local would want one in front of their-
I think you're gonna, you're gonna find that tho- those that requested are gonna want it on the same side, just so you know.
I don't agree with that, I, I think that's a clutter on that side of the street.
Did you guys go to the winter walk? All those frickin' trees on the side, I, when we're walking there, it's like one person traffic, you couldn't, you had, you couldn't get through. Sidewalks are supposed to be meant to like walk on, I get it.
And winter walk was special, cause you had three hundred people all down at the same time, where picnic tables in downtown Walkability, you don't see that kinda traffic. You see onesie, twosie, and I don't know what, maybe on Joe Town Rocks it'd be terrible, but
Right.
I'm just telling you, from a resident and people visiting, it's one of the best received things we've done, is put outside seating.
Well, the bars can have their patrons out there drinking, so they, I mean.
So really, you're thinking just kinda local blend, what?
I mean, local blend has its own chairs out there, I mean, the businesses, if they need to put chairs out there, I mean, we have an ordinance that they can.
Yeah.
Well, I think that there's a request, I, we, we, I don't, I-
You know, I'd hate to have built all those picnic tables, and not, are they gonna go to shelf and not use them?
Use them out in the parks.
Well, or the other side, you know?
But on the south side, I, I agree to put them on the south side.
My opinion is if a, if a business requests it, that we should furnish it just like we have in the past.
I agree.
Agreed.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I would disagree with that too, I don't think anything belongs on the north side there, that just clutters up pedestrian traffic, people walking.
My motion is, and I'm making a motion to, uh, if businesses request one, that they so get a picnic table from the city.
But we're not blasting out.
Motion and, yeah, we, motion and second, giving a picnic table, those businesses request it, all those are papers signed by I.
I.
Opposed?
Hey.
Motion carries. Item nine, committee reports.
I wanna just go back up on that, have them, put them on the south side though. Ryan. I don't know if that was in your motion, I don't think that, no.
And I wouldn't request if, if somebody wants a picnic table in front of their business, why would you put it on the opposite side of the street?
Cause people like to sit on the other side of the street, that's where the shade is.
We can put some other, we can put additional ones on the other side of the street, we can, but.
Whatever, whatever, they're ugly.
Now, item nine, committee reports.
I did have, um, with the park board, and, um, we've had some issues with attendance of the members. And so, I don't know how we can address this, but, you know, as we were just talking about, there are, we need to talk about some things and we aren't able to because the members aren't showing up, and so I guess I posed that, um, to the rest of the council members of, um, how would we like to address that?
When are your meetings?
You, you don't.
They were in the evening, and, I know we don't, but, uh, just like we were talking about, you know, this grant that was coming across and things that we need to talk about, um, it's getting to the point where it's like, you know, do we need to have a, um, conversation with the members in the sense of, um, either letting us know they're not coming? with the members in the sense of, um, either letting us know they're not coming? Um, we have two new ones that we didn't even get to meet, um, at the park.
That's, that's up to, that's actually up to the park board.
Okay.
I mean, the park board polices themselves.
The two new members weren't aware of the meeting, and that's why they weren't there.
Okay.
So, I would suspect that they're gonna show up next time, for sure.
I, I sure hope so. 'Cause, but that's the biggest thing, is, is being able, you know, so that we can make those decisions and, and conversate about those. So, I, I, I'm not saying anything against, it's just that is a, um, the last three times, so.
Yeah, I think the first discussion is maybe you and Rhonda, maybe there's another way around it, but we did talk about some volunteer organizations that might help as well, that staff reading as well. Anything else, committee reports, were there any other committees? Anything? Okay. Item ten, I have nothing, mayor reports.
So, move to adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed. We are adjourned, thank you all very much.
Twenty minutes longer than it should have.
At least.
That's 'cause I, it's 'cause I opined.
Me too, don't worry.
No, no. I opined, yeah.